The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to officially call this meeting to order, and I would love to announce the Green Hills and West Bristol All-Stars directed by Christine Sykes. They will be performing the National Anthem. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose brushights and bright stars knew the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?[126.25][126.25](Applause)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in observing a moment of silence for Bill Brostrm, who was a tech education teacher at Bristol Central from March 1st, 1999 to June 30th, 2013, and Lillian Stewart-Johnson-Mosa, a history teacher at Southside School from September 6, 1960 to September 10, 1963.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mrs. Sykes. And children, you did an amazing job.
All right, while the last of our singers are trickling out to do their homework, I'm going to read aloud our meeting norms. These are what we expect at each and every meeting. All participants have equal voice and airtime is shared. Assume positive intentions. Be honest and open to cultivate trust. Respect and honor diversity of opinions, beliefs, and perspectives. Focus on ideas, practices, and the work, not people. Maintain active participation. Engage in the work of the meeting. And finally, disagree respectfully. Who would like to be this evening's norm checker? Commissioner O'Brien.[259.57][259.57](Laughter) I am thrilled that you will be our norm checker for this evening. Please stay tuned, everybody. I will now turn the staff and student recognition over to Dr. Carbone.
Thank you. Ms. Sykes, we were happy to have your chorus, and we are thrilled to have you come and explain your drumming program.
Absolutely.
And have some students demonstrate.
Well, I think they all left, but I've got some really participants, so I'm good.
Excellent.
So, Mrs. Carbone asked me to come and talk to you about our drumming program. We've been doing it for several years since the K-8s, excuse me, opened up. I teach chorus at West Bristol and Green Hills, and I also teach general music, which is drumming, guitar, keyboard, and technology. So, I start off teaching drumming, and every year the numbers have grown. So, I start off teaching drumming by asking kids if they have rhythm, if they feel that they have rhythm, or if they feel that they don't have rhythm. Or if they feel like they don't have rhythm. And so, I'm going to ask you, raise your hand if you think that you have a good, some good rhythm. Raise your hand. Okay? Raise your hand if you don't think you have rhythm.[344.41][344.41](Laughter) Okay? All right, and so I ask them all that, and it's a relevant question because, you know, adults say all the time, "Well, I can't do music. I have no rhythm." Well, guess what you do? I want you to take a minute and find your heartbeat. Find your heartbeat. And when you find your heartbeat, I want you to tap it out either by your foot, or on your lap, or on a desk, or anything. Find your heartbeat. Tap it out. I can't believe that's my phone. Oh, my God.[381.13][381.13](Laughter)
It has rhythm, Chris.
I know. So, if we were to continue, it sounded disjointed, but if we were to continue after a while, all of our heartbeats would become the same. It's called entrainment. It's a science that says that any time humans get together and they stay together for a while, their heartbeats start to beat together. Our breathing rate is the same. So, we all have rhythm. So, in answer to your question, those people who think they don't have rhythm, if you didn't have rhythm, you'd be dead. So, you have rhythm. So, the thing is to find out where it is. When I do this, it's listening. When I do this, it's saying. So, when I'm doing this, what are you doing? When I do this, what are you going to do? You're going to say, "Heartbeat, heartbeat." Say it. Heartbeat. Play it. Heartbeat. Just play it wherever you are. Heartbeat. Do that. Heartbeat. This means keep going. Keep going. You guys, heartbeat, heart. Do it, please. Heartbeat, heart. Do it. Heartbeat. Do it. Heartbeat. You guys, heartbeat, heart. Over there. Heartbeat, heart. Over there. Do it. Heartbeat, heart. Over there. Heartbeat, heart. Over there. This means stop. So, I've got some drums here, but to tell you the truth, do you want a few drums or no? Are you done?
Yeah, I want drums. I want drums.
Public Works, Public Works.
Just give it to whoever wants one.
Mr. Morocco said he wanted one first.
These are the decision-makers right here. Just take one.
Don't break them. There's no money in the budget for new drums.[500.00][500.00](Laughter)
Don't give them all up. They're easy to play. They're hair drumming. We have a full array of African drums in both schools, and we use them.
But they said to bring them to us.
Okay, bring them up here.[518.41][518.41](Music)
Sure, why not? Sure, why not?[523.33][523.33](Laughter)
Get a drum out of the bag and pass it out.
Oh, that's cool.
Can you give my drum to that gentleman in a black sweater over there that's hiding his eyes? Thanks. That's what he gets.[541.75][541.75](Laughter)
Oh, very cool. Thank you.
Another thing, if you can say it, you can play it. If you can say it.
You can play it.
If you can say it.
You can play it.
Ma raka clave. Say it. Ma raka clave. Say it again. Ma raka clave. Now, play it. Ma raka clave. Play it. You don't have a drum. You can play it. Keep playing. Ma raka clave. Five, four, three, two, stop. Yes. So, this is some of what we do in drumming. The kids love it. Music is a vehicle for everyone. Everyone has rhythm. You don't have to be a musician. You just have to be human, and you will learn from it. Any questions? You're welcome to come to my classes anytime to observe. Thank you for your work. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.[586.72][586.72](Applause)
Ms. Sykes, I think after every snow day, we'll send the drums over to Mr. Morocco over at Public Works.
Okay.
And they can just, you know, get their energy, y'all.
We can do that.
I thought they would just gravitate towards. Make it sensitive. That's a rhythmation.
It's rhythmation. Thank you, Ms. Sykes.
Hang the drums slowly, yes.
I would like to invite Mrs. Forten to introduce and recognize two of our groups and a teacher.
I have the best job being able to highlight the creativity of our staff and recognize them for their contributions. So, thank you again to Mrs. Sykes for her introduction to the drum circle. For those of you who aren't aware, she's one of our music teachers with our K-8 programs. I'm also lucky enough to share with you another creative talent among one of our staff members who is Lisa Ayat, who will come up and join me up here. Mrs. Ayat is an instructional support teacher at Hubble School, and she has created and published three books, "Punny Jokes to Tell Your Peeps." And I'll share one just because I think it's appropriate. After two days of snow, where do polar bears put their money? In a snow bank. And we have the images that she created. Mrs. Ayat is not only a teacher in town, but she lives in town here in Bristol and has attended, her K-12 educational experience was also with us as a student in Bristol Public Schools. So, she's created and published these books and donated them to all of our K-8 schools. So, we wanted to thank you for your creative contribution. Thank you.[708.41][708.41](Applause) Okay. On October 23rd, we didn't have the chance to talk about this at the November Board of Education meeting, but on October 23rd, all of us participated in Imagine a Day Without Water. Leading up to this day, Bristol Public Schools partnered with the Bristol Water Department to bring awareness to the importance of water conservation. Elementary-age students created posters showing how their lives rely on the availability of water, and all of those posters are available for your review in the superintendent's office. Connected to this effort, we thought we would want to highlight the Bristol Eastern Thirst Project, who has partnered with the largest youth organization seeking to ensure that all of our global citizens have access to clean water. It's tightly connected. This is an example of our vision of the graduate in action. This takes into account global awareness, collaboration, civic literacy, and obviously critical thinking and problem solving. We have Mrs. Wendy Adams, who's the advisor, and several students to speak about the Thirst Project. So, we have Chelsea Boating, who's the president. We also have Madison Vita, Jennifer Black, and Maddie Turner. I think Chelsea's going to speak. Yes, and share with us more about the program.
Good evening, everyone. Should I put this down? Oh, okay. 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 Good evening, everyone. My name is Chelsea Boating. I am a sophomore at Bristol Eastern High School, an avid student, and the president of a club called the Thirst Project. If you have not heard of this project, the Thirst Project is a project to raise money to build wells for countries in Africa. It's an organization meant to help families who are suffering from illnesses due to not having a clean source of water. Drinking contaminated water can lead to many diarrhea diseases, including chorea and other illness such as Guinea warm disease, typhoid, edisenteri. Contaminated water diseases cost 3.4 million deaths each year. As you heard, I do not have an English last name. From both sides of my family, my parents were born and raised in Ghana, which is located in West Africa, if you're interested. I remember when I was younger, my mom used to scold me for taking hour-long showers. She always tells me stories about how she had to walk hours with barrels on both shoulders to bring back home to her family. Back then, I didn't really listen or pay attention to my mother, but now I understand why she got so aggravated with me. She used to walk under the sun for hours to have water that wouldn't even last a week in her house. But at the end of the long journey, she had a clean source of water for her family. These families don't. What we are trying to do is inform as many people as we can about families under this situation, and the first place we can start are schools. Recently, we have planned events at schools to get the club's name out there. We plan a water week where we bring dirty water bottles filled with dirty water to school to catch our classmates' attentions. And we planned a cyber day where we spend our social medias to put the cloud out to the public. And a day where we go to the cafeteria to see who can carry half a barrel of water to inform everyone at school what teenagers in this age group have to go through. We can do so much. Thank you.[934.43][934.43](Applause)
So, I understand right now there's 140 members in the Thirst Project at Bristol Eastern, and they're trying to build a well.
In East Swatini. So, the well cost about $12,000. Our goal, even if it's a couple of years, is to eventually have a Bristol well. It would be really great in East Swatini.
And so, if people want to contribute?
You can come see us. We're going to set up our fundraising.
Sort of like a GoFundMe page, but it's through the Thirst Project. We will send that email blast out as soon as everything gets approved, and we will send that out. And we're going to be doing a lot of different fundraisers.
Our hope is to have a water carnival at the end of the year, including a dump tank and just kind of a nice end-of-year activity, hopefully, if it ever gets nice out.[974.31][974.31](Laughter)
So, thank you to those students again. Great efforts.
I hope you're going to invite Mrs. Forten to sit on the dump.
Been there before.[983.12][983.12](Laughter)
You thought you got away with it.
I did. I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And before I sit down, I also need to just highlight later in the consent agenda, you'll be voting on the Perkins Grant. And I want to highlight that one of the elements that we're looking to fund within this Perkins Grant submission is bringing back the Certified Nurses Assistant Program at Bristol Eastern High School. It's been quite some time since we've had that program. It's going to offer an excellent opportunity for students. Let's see, Jamie, do you want to say a few words about the CNA program before you can vote on it later in the consent agenda?
So, as we have looked to build our Perkins budget for this year, what the state has asked us to do is to really look at our local community and what industries our residents are working in and what industries we have to offer. And one of the industries, the highest percentage of our population, works within the healthcare industry, but we do not have a pathway in our high school program that currently services that industry or puts students out with a certification or college credit towards working within a hospital as a CNA or starting in a nursing program. So, through this Perkins budget, what we are looking to do is to partner with a community college in the state and to align our curriculum so that our students can have a hands-on nursing experience within our schools and, hopefully, Bristol Hospital. And this will all be kind of facilitated and worked through this academic year. Does anybody have questions?
Very excited.
What community colleges would you be looking for?
So, currently, the community colleges in the region that have nursing programs would be Nagatuck Valley, Capital Community College, or Goodwin. Those are the three with the closest proximity that would have a partnership ability.
Currently, there is not a program at either high school?
There is not. There was in the past. It was broken down about five years ago. Five years? Can you do a little longer? Or longer?
So, one more question. So, how did you choose which high school to put the program?
It was really about, it's really about spacing. And right now, Bristol Central offers culinary and cooking program, and Eastern does not have that. So, we're looking to just put in a parallel program. It would just have a different pathway. My goal is, over time, to open up that CNA program to students of both high schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, lastly, we would like to recognize the efforts of our partnerships with our friends over at Public Works. And so, I am going to introduce Emily Gomez, a principal at Ivy Drive School, to introduce both Lindsay and Jason Morocco, members of Jason Morocco, and the community garden program that we have.
Great. So, good evening. As the principal of Ivy Drive, I represent one of the many schools that have benefited from the partnership with Bristol Public Works. At Ivy, we have the privilege of having Lindsay Rivers and Jason Morocco, who also doubles as a proud Ivy Drive parent. And their team come over. They cleared our courtyards, which was an extensive job. They built a pollinating garden and updated our raised vegetable beds, taught our fifth graders how to create organic corner, and we look forward to fully funding our outdoor learning space soon so that we can continue to provide our students with ongoing opportunities for hands-on learning. And we too would invite you at any point when there's not snow all over the ground to come and see the gardens in action and to see the students interact with the space because it's really an incredible opportunity that we've been afforded through the partnership with Bristol Public Works. So, we are very, very grateful.
Thank you.
Through the chair. Can I have the chair?
Of course.
Go ahead, Mrs. Everett. Okay.
I will. Okay. Just quickly, I had the privilege of going to Ivy Drive when the Department of Public Works was there, and truly kudos go to Lindsay and to Mr. Morocco and all of the members that were there. The kids just, like, raced to them. It was almost like the Pied Piper. And they were down on their knees. They got their hands dirty. I'm talking about them. The kids did too, but so did they. They were planting garlic, and I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention that Lindsay came up with the greatest phrase for these gardens. A work of heart.
Bristol Gardens.
Bristol Gardens, work of heart. So, they're wonderful. They're absolutely beautiful facilities, and kudos. Thank you very much.
Lindsay, do you also want to share with our greater community the next project that you're launching?
So, the first project, obviously, is the vegetable gardens. We just went to Ivy Drive, Green Hills School, and also Stafford School, and in the summertime, we planted rosemary. So, we went back. I told all the kids that planted, "We're going to come back, and we're going to make an organic cleaner because you can't use cleaner with chemicals in the schools." So, they were all excited. We went back. We taught them. We went out to the gardens. We showed all the kids, you know, what you guys can create and do next spring. As we were out there and teaching and talking about all that, I was like, "It would be so great if we had, like, a chalkboard or something to write on and teach the kids, even if we're outside and cold or it's raining, and teach the kids about what we're talking about with this cleaner." So, that's what we, me and Jay brainstormed, and we came up with the outdoor classroom part. Stafford School, where my son goes, he's in fourth grade, they have a learning pad already. They have flexible seating. They have the gardens. All they need is that chalkboard. So, I was like, "This will be perfect." And then, the Sustainable CT Grant came, which is the match funding. So, if something is donated, it's donated 100%. And I was like, "This is going to be a perfect project for that." I got it approved through Sustainable CT for the project that we're going to be doing, and we'll be doing it in every school, high school, all the way to grammar school.
Excellent.
We just did the greenhouse at Central High School. I did see Kate.[1446.12][1446.12](Laughter) The kids were absolutely amazing. I was like, "Why couldn't I have the greenhouse when I was at Central?" But they were great. They already came up with, like, a million ideas. They built it into the curriculum already. It was fantastic to see that my little idea, they're taking it way farther than I ever expected.
We really appreciate your support and your partnership.
Thank you.
And you also refurbished our greenhouse at Northeast.
Yes.
Earlier this year.
Yes.
Looking forward to more partnering as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1485.36][1485.36](Applause)
She answered my question, actually. I was just going to thank her for making it a district-wide program with the effort of it being district-wide.
We're also going to be doing one at the Challenge Course. I don't want to misspeak. Pine Lake Challenge Course, because when the kids go to field trips there, it'll be the same thing. They can use that chalkboard and the flex seating to learn off of it, and it's the same thing that would be in their school.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes. You have all received a copy of the minutes in your board packets. There were two, the November 6th regular meeting and the November 18th special meeting. May I please have a motion to approve the November 6th regular meeting minutes as written?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Yes.
I only have the November 18th.
You refresh. We should have both in your packet.
I did refresh.
Are they both there?
Oh, wait a minute. They came.
They were sent, and sent an email.
I have.
They're there.
Under the attachments, only the November 18th ones are there?
I just opened the 18th.
I'll just abstain. It's because I didn't have a copy.
They didn't think you'd be back.
Miss Everett.
They didn't bother to send them to you.
You're right.
And they were sent in the email as well.
Excuse me?
They were sent, they were here, they're here, and they were sent in the email.
Okay. So, they're in the email in your email packet, and they are attached as an attachment. I think some of the commissioners are having a hard time getting to the attachment.
Do we want to hold on the November 6th meeting for now and vote?
Yep.
Okay. So, may I please have a motion to approve the November 18th special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to circle back around to this? Okay, so, the November 6th regular meeting minutes will be on our next January 2020 regular meeting, and we will approve them then. Moving on to committee reports. No committees have officially met, however, Commissioner Vibert did speak to Jill regarding finance because it is imperative that our financial house stay in order. So, Commissioner Vibert, would you like to share?
Yes, thank you very much. Though we haven't met, I do think it's important that finances reported on monthly basis because of all the ups and downs, but we have some ups to talk about right now. So, I'm just going to ask Jill to give a quick explanation of what's happening right now.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. You were sent the October 31st snapshot and update via email, even though our committee did not have an opportunity to meet.
Under the attachments, only the November 18th ones are there?
I just opened the 18th. I'll just abstain. It's because I didn't have a copy.
They didn't think you'd be back. They didn't bother to send them to you.
You're right.
And they were sent in the email as well.
Excuse me?
They were sent, they were here, they're here, and they were sent in the email.
Okay. So they're in, in the email, in your email packet, and they are attached as an attachment. I think some of the commissioners are having a hard time getting to the attachment.
Do we want to hold on the November 6th meeting for now and vote the?
Yep.
Okay. So may I please have a motion to approve the November 18th special meeting?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we want to circle back around to this? Okay, so the November 6th regular meeting minutes will be on our next January 2020 regular meeting, and we will approve them then. Moving on to committee reports. No committees have officially met, however Commissioner Vibert did speak to Jill regarding finance, because it is imperative that our financial house stay in order. So Commissioner Vibert, would you like to share?
Yes, thank you very much. Though we haven't met, I did think it's, I do think it's important that finance is reported on monthly basis because of all the ups and downs, but we have some ups to talk about right now. So I'm just going to ask Jill to give a quick explanation of what's happening right now.
Sure. Good evening, commissioners. You were sent the October 31st snapshot and update via email, even though our committee did not have an opportunity to meet. At that time, we did begin to exceed our initial budget in regular education transportation by about $11,000. That caused us to give that some closer scrutiny, and we could see that in the regular education line, we had some students receiving special accommodations through 504 plans. We had two students that joined us out of area, and then we had one gifted student taking classes at a different school. And that caused us to go over budget in that line. We are nearing the end of contracts in special education placements. Although we're okay, as we end October, we did process more, we finished all of the contracts for out placements within the month of November. So October 31st looks great. When we do our finance meeting to discuss November, we have gone over budget in that line. However, we did expect that we would. We will closely monitor and report any movement in that regard. You will also notice at this time that the city has transferred out monies for medical insurance, and those funds no longer show as available overall. That's a big jump, because that's about a $17 million transfer. Regarding any appropriations and transfers, we did not have anything of significance, other than you're okay to make some transfers for our CAPE membership. And then with regard to the cafeteria, district-wide lunches have increased on an average of about 1,000 meals per day. Lunch cash sale comparison, our cash sales have dropped by about $28,700. However, the reimbursement has increased by $104,442 year-to-date. So one more than offsets the other. I was asked a question about our employees in the cafeteria and some longer lines. Because of our CEP enrollment, we were able to, in all of the other schools except for Bristol Central, we added hours onto existing staff. For Bristol Central, the new high school CEP membership, we did post for another cafeteria employer. Unless you have questions of me at this time, I'll ask Kim Culkin to join me to give you special education-specific information.
Discussion. Chair.
Does anybody have anything that they wanted to ask Jill? Any discussion? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to provide you with an update regarding special education enrollment and trends in our department. As of November 1st, 2019, we had 1,700 students out of our 8,330 Bristol students identified as requiring special education programming. This enrollment represents 21.25% of Bristol students. Of overall new students enrolling in Bristol schools during the month of October 2019, 29% of students came to Bristol schools already identified as eligible for special education services and programs. And since April of 2019, eight newly registered students came to us, already placed in out-of-district school programs for their special education needs. It is important to note that in addition to special education programming requirements, by November 1st of this school year, our staff in Bristol have conducted nearly 70 risk assessments. We've conducted 12 psychiatric evaluations, and received requests for four independent educational evaluations. As of November 1st, we have 118 of our 1,700 students requiring out-of-district placements at special education school programs, and 54 students requiring special education programming and services at other out-of-district school placements such as magnet schools. I appreciate your continued support as we provide for our students with disabilities in Bristol. Any questions?
Questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're now going to move on to the chairwoman report. So I would like to start off by saying that I consider it a great honor to be here as your board chair. It is a role that I do not take lightly. I wholeheartedly feel that everyone seated at this table is here because they have a desire to serve the amazing students of our district. It's my goal as chair that we will all work together cohesively to benefit the students and to be positive examples and role models, and that together we will make great strides for and in Bristol schools. We were to talk about our December 2nd retreat, but Mother Nature had other plans. So the new date for our retreat is going to be Wednesday, December 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00. That will be upstairs in room 36. I have established Board of Education committee assignments. Everyone should have received a copy in your meeting packet, and there's a hard copy at your seats this evening as well. These committees need to be approved by the full board. I would entertain a motion to add committee assignment approval to the agenda under new business at this time.
Some move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now have our student representative reports. Tonight, from Bristol Central, we will be having junior Madison Laprise sharing with us the happenings.
I'm Madison Laprise, representing Bristol Central High School, and reporting on the happenings since the last meeting. As you all know, we had two snow days this week, so thank you, Dr. Carbone, for that. We all enjoyed them very much. We started the month off with the end of quarter one and our annual homecoming dance on November 9th, which saw a large turnout. Tickets sold out in about the first week, week and a half after they went on sale. Both the junior and senior classes held fundraiser at Panera on the 13th and the 21st, respectively. In preparation for Thanksgiving, our school held our turkey lunch on the 21st of November. The girls' powder puff football event saw a 6-0 victory for the sophomores over the juniors on the 23rd of November. The boys' football team was honored in our B.C. pep rally on the 27th, which featured the cheer team, dance team, band, and a senior skit. On Thanksgiving morning, Bristol Central came home with a bell for the fifth year in a row, thanks to our football team. The rest of our sports teams had successful off-seasons, with the girls' volleyball team and boys' soccer team both making it to the quarterfinal round in the state tournaments. Bristol Central's drama department, Central Stage, put on three spectacular performances of the fall play Almost Maine on the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Some students enrolled in Italian, attended the Yukon ECE Italian Quiz Bowl on the 22nd, accompanied by Mrs. Gallo. Bristol Central won first place in the team and individual competitions. The school looks forward to the upcoming holiday and break. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, representing Bristol Eastern, we'll have senior Drew Dophney.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Drew Dophney, the senior representative reporting on Bristol Eastern. For the month of December, or considering November, this report is not too long, as this month flew by with numerous days off of school due to holidays and the weather. Much of what had occurred at Eastern this past month has been mainly extracurricular activities and events. The fall sports season wrapped up throughout the first two weeks of November, and just this past week for football. The stellar undefeated regular seasons of both the girls' volleyball team and the boys' soccer team, who I was lucky to be captain of, came to an early end, both ending in the, going home in the quarterfinals of the state tournament. And we had a fall sports banquet to honor all players and teams on November 25th. We also held our 2019 pep rally last Wednesday that preceded the annual Thanksgiving game between Central and Eastern football teams, which provided another exciting final game for our school. To lead up to our pep rally, BE had its Spirit Week, which garnered a lot of student and teacher participation, with Hawaiian, Color War, Decade, and Meme Days. In addition, BE had its traditional holiday luncheon on Thursday, November 21st. We also held the Fall Choral Concert on November 7th that showcased performances by Strawberry Fields Magical Singers and Concert Choir. And we also have another upcoming holiday Band and Chorus Concert on December 17th. Two weeks ago, the volleyball program held the Boys' Powder Puff Volleyball Tournament. And a week after that, the football team initiated a Girls' Powder Puff Football Tournament that both resulted in a lot of fun and involvement from students. Although, also throughout November, we met the end of the first 2019 academic quarter and are now about halfway through quarter two. We also have some upcoming events before we head into Christmas break. We are doing a Steph A. Police Cruiser Toy Drive on December 19th that will support the Connecticut Children's Foundation. Furthermore, we are hosting BHS Performing Arts Performances of a Christmas Carol on December 13th and 14th. And a week later, on December 20th, the day before we leave for break, we will hold Band and Choir performances for students during the school day, and we will hold extended lunch waves with holiday-themed activities and cheer to take part during the lunch. Bristol Eastern continues to have an exciting, comfortable atmosphere for students, and is pushing forwards towards the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the superintendent's report.
I will be updating the board on our district priorities, and in particular, this evening, I will be speaking primarily to our learner-focused priority. This is purposeful in the consent agenda. You will see that the Alliance District Grant is up for a vote by the Board of Education. I want to highlight the why the Alliance District Grant is in front of you and looking for your approval, and also how it relates to our greater strategy. For folks who are new to the Board of Ed, a history on the Alliance program and the Alliance Grant. The Alliance District Program supports the 33 lowest-performing school districts in the state of Connecticut. Its funding is designed to increase student outcomes and close the achievement gaps. Funding, however, is contingent upon submission of a grant application outlining our reform initiatives, and our reform initiatives need to follow in four particular areas. Talent, talent management, talent coaching and growth, academics, improved outcomes for all, climate, school discipline, attendance, or operations, the general goings-on of the district. We have requested and historically have supported many of our academic programs, and I will highlight those programs in a minute. For folks who are wondering about the Alliance Districts, the 33 districts, I want to highlight a few numbers that are important for you to understand about an Alliance District. So the Alliance District, those 33 districts I was talking about, represent 42% of all of Connecticut's K-12 students. They also represent 63% of Connecticut's students of color. They represent 65% of Connecticut's students who receive free or reduced hot lunch in federal foods program, that's including pre-K, and 76% of Connecticut's English learners. That is the Alliance District in, as a whole. In Bristol, we have 7,800 students in our, in our building every day. We are represented by 49% of students of color, 48% of our students receive free or reduced lunch, and 5% of our students qualify as English learners. So how do we use our funds? We will, we will receive $4.2 million through the grant. I want you to understand that the grant is part of our ECS formula, and they carve out a certain portion that they ask districts to write a grant for, so it is part of the money that we would be afforded prior to this program. We fund the following. 15.5 kindergarten teachers, so we can offer a full-day pre, full-day K, because we couldn't do that prior to this money. 5.75 literacy coaches, three math coaches, three social-emotional learning coordinators, social workers, two and a half, 2.5 APs, so if you add them together, they would be one assistant principal, eight technology interns, one pre-K teacher, and one pre-K para, an attendance coordinator, math materials, a communications and grants coordinator, and 5.8 instructional support teachers, or intensive reading support, and professional learning contracts. So fast facts about Alliance Districts. Here's one fast fact. Improvement in Alliance Districts outpace all of non-Aliance Districts in literacy, numeracy, chronic absenteeism, graduation rates. Another fast fact, Alliance Districts educate students with approximately $900 less per pupil than non-Aliance Districts. And despite Alliance dollars, the state of Connecticut spends nearly $200,000 less on students who attend Alliance Districts, between local and state revenue. So for you, in the consent agenda is, is a summary of what we submitted to the State Department of Education. Second, I would like to honor and recognize former board commissioners. At our last meeting, we were able to recognize Commissioner Caggianno, and this evening, I'd like to recognize the service of former Commissioner Hints and former Commissioner Patton. Commissioner Patton served on our Board of Education from July of 2019 to November of 2019. He was the chair of the Policy Committee. And Commissioner Hints served on the Board of Education from 2011 to 2019. She served as the secretary from 2015 to 2019, numerous, chaired numerous building committees, and was also the chair of our Operations Committee from 2015 to 2019. Similarly, to Mr. Caggianno and Kuscher Bobowski, who was also honored for his service, we would like to recognize Ms. Hints and Mr. Patton, and also donate on their behalf to our libraries, oh, the places we will go. Commissioner, thank you so much. I need your support. Look at that. Awesome, thank you. Okay. And a formal welcome to our new commissioners, and that is my report for the evening.
We will now move on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 8, 1A through 8, 2B?
Some moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We will move on to public comment. Susan, is there any public comment tonight? Okay, so before we call up our...
You may recognize the names.
Awesome. Well, before I recognize any names, I'm going to remind everybody the procedures for addressing the Board of Education. Members of the public are invited to comment to the board on any topic related to school business. Items requiring consideration by the board must be approved as an agenda item by a 2/3 vote of the board members present. Such items may be referred for further study and not necessarily acted upon at present meeting. Anyone wishing to address the board should adhere to the following procedures. Sign in on the public comment sign-in roster, which is over there. Wait to be recognized by the board chair. Proceed to the speaker's microphone. Preface your remarks by stating your name and address. Direct your comments to the board chairwoman. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And I cannot stress this enough, any comments should be made in an appropriate manner, particularly if concerning a personnel matter. That being said, I would like to recognize Jeffrey Caggianno.
I promise you, I won't come close to the three minutes. Jeffrey Caggianno, 27, Cricket Hill Road. And really, the main reason I wanted to come up is I was unfortunately not able to come to the last meeting. I was recognized as Ripley and Karen were tonight, and I really wanted to say thank you for that. I've actually already used the little pass to get into games. Love watching the games, and I will continue to be involved in the Bristol Public Schools. It's been a great experience. I had a great four years here. I will continue to stay involved and watch what happens too, and I do want to congratulate all of the previous board members and the new board members, and hope that you will all move forward in very good form. And I am very glad that Tom O'Brien is your norm person, because he's done very well already. So I wish we had that while I was a board member, but I do look forward to you all doing great things for the children of this city. I am looking forward to, and this is with a little bit of regret, that I did not hear our operational or organizational effectiveness that we're looking forward to. that we're looking forward to with the bringing on of the intra-district arts magnet school. But that will be something that I'll be looking forward all of you to do. So, thank you. I do appreciate it. It was a great four years. Thank you.
Under our deliberated items and district leadership team reports, I'd like to bring up Carly Fortin, who's going to discuss team mentors and cooperating teachers.
Good evening, Commissioners. Again, this time, I am here to request your approval of three teachers to serve as potential team mentors for our beginning teachers. The state of Connecticut requires that we provide teacher education and mentoring to beginning teachers within their first two years of employment as a teacher. In Bristol, right now, we have 39 beginning teachers who are in their first two years, 20 teachers in year two, and 19 teachers in year one. Each one of those teachers has a veteran teacher who has received mentoring, training, and training around working with adults in professional learning, and they're afforded 10 hours of mentoring per semester of school. We have had such a great number of beginning teachers working now with us within the district that we are in need of adding to the pool of available teachers who are trained to ultimately become a mentor. So, I'm looking for approval for Kathleen Frazier, who's a special education teacher at Southside School; Megan Riley, who's also a special education teacher at West Bristol School; and Katie Pepe, who is a physical education teacher at Chickens Hill Middle School.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I keep forgetting to say opposed, because we're all in agreement so far. This is great.
Thank you for your approval.
Next, we will be having a presentation by our Board Attorney, Jessica Ritter, on legal obligations of the Board.
So, this is our first convening of the new Board of Education, their tenure. And so, we invited Attorney Ritter, who represents the Board of Education, to complete one onboarding session. Thank you so much, Attorney Ritter, for joining us this evening.
It's pro bono, right?
Of course. You're on the record.
Well, thank you so much for having me. Congratulations to all the new Commissioners. I'm Jessica Ritter from Shipman &amp; Goodwin, and of course, there are also many friendly faces here. So, I've been asked, and to those who are in the audience, this will be about an hour-long presentation. But what I've been asked to do is to go over your roles and responsibility as Board of Education members. So, for some of you, like Mr. O'Brien, this might be old hat, but maybe even you, Mr. O'Brien, will learn something. I also did talk to Mr. O'Brien earlier this evening. In front of you, you have the PowerPoint presentations, and you also have responders. I've built in some scenarios that are actually taken from live examples that we, Attorneys at Shipman &amp; Goodwin, have dealt with many of our Boards of Education. And so, the point is to hopefully foster some lively and productive conversation through these scenarios. So, that's what those responders are in front of you. So, let's start. So, responsibilities of the Board. You are an agent of the state. Whether you know it or not, the Connecticut Constitution makes clear that you are responsible for providing a free education for all public school children. So, that is an inherent right for all of our public school children. You are, the state specifically, has delegated certain obligations to you as the Board of Education. And through Title 10, which is where we can find all of our education statutes, where they all have been codified, they set out specifically what your responsibilities are. They have delegated many of the responsibilities through the General Assembly to you. However, as you will see, in recent years, some of your duties have been impeded significantly as the legislature seems to be getting more and more involved in the interests of educational affairs. So, one, you serve as a policymaker for the school district. So, I don't know, I know that you're doing your committee appointments tonight, but who of you have served on the policy committee previously? Okay. And so, when you are enacting policies, are you also enacting administrative regulations?
We have not been.
You have not been? Okay. So, oftentimes, there is a tension between you as the policymaker and your Superintendent of Schools, or the rest of your cabinet, as those who are implementing the day-to-day administrative regulations. So, you, when you are adopting your policy, which is absolutely one of your most important duties and responsibilities, you want to think broadly. So, you first have an obligation to make sure that any policy that is required by law that you have in place, because if you don't, or if we do have a policy in place that is either out of compliance with state law, or if we don't follow our own policies, you're obviously going to have some significant exposure or liability under the law. Differ that, or contrast that with our administrative regulations. That's where we trust our Superintendent of Schools, who is also the Chief Executive Officer of the Board of Education, to implement the day-to-day operations of our school. So, let me give you an example. Your policy for student discipline should be very clear and in compliance with the law that there are certain mandatory reasons for when a student could be expelled from school. You also may lay out some discretionary tools for our administration to say, "In addition to those that are mandated by law, here is some discretion that the Superintendent of Schools and Cabinet and other administrators may have and may want to consider." But what we don't want to do is implement or micromanage what our Superintendent of Schools and our administration think might be an appropriate response, let's say, to a bus incident or some type of altercation between students. We want to allow our Superintendent of Schools and her administration to make those decisions without too much Board micromanaging. So, that's very important, that we have an overly broad policy that is in compliance with state law, but that if we are going to implement administrative regulations, we ensure that our Superintendent and our administrative staff have flexibility when implementing those regulations. So, the other thing that we want to be mindful of is 10-157 is very clear that the Superintendent of Schools is our Chief Executive Officer. That means that he or she, and in your case, Dr. Carbone, she is in charge. She is the CEO, right? But she is going to report to our Commissioners and to our Board of Education on items of Board business. So, we want to be careful that we allow our Superintendent of Schools to serve as our Chief Executive Officer, but that we have appropriate checks and balances with our Superintendent of Schools. So, what are some other duties of the Board? You are to preserve confidentiality. So, in your role, you're going to get a lot of information, whether it be maybe potentially about some student matters that properly come to your attention, whether that be a student residency issue, a student expulsion issue, a matter related to transportation, whether there be some type of lawsuit before you. It's going to be important that when you receive that information, and you are only going to receive that information in your capacity as a Board member to do what you need to do as a Board member, not that you have any special privilege to that information otherwise, that we make sure that when we learn of those confidential matters, that we take that responsibility very seriously. And we don't divulge that information either to our spouse, to our children, or to any of our friends. So, we have to take that very seriously. Of course, you have a wonderful connection with your community. I will say, it's very difficult to follow such talented singers and such talented students. And clearly, there is a wonderful connection between our Commissioners, our administration, and our community here. Some of your other statutory duties, which are set forward in Title 10 of the education statutes, is also the budgetary work, right? Obviously, that's something that you guys work on in consultation with your Superintendent all year round. And I know you all understand how important that responsibility is. And negotiations, and I know Mr. O'Brien can certainly fill in everyone, as he's been the Chair of Negotiations for quite some time. And I don't know, for those of you who are new to the Board of Education, obviously, most of your staff here is unionized, and they all belong to different collective bargaining groups. And you do have a responsibility, which this Board takes very seriously, to negotiate the terms and conditions of employment with those groups. So, what are some rights that you have of Board members? Your authority at Board members is to happen at meetings only. So, you should never be conducting Board business or having side deals that aren't being done at a proper Board meeting. You otherwise have the same rights as other citizens. So, that means that you don't have any greater right to information unless you need to know that information to do your job as a Board member. So, for instance, let's say you had a child who was in high school, and there was another child who happened to be picking on your child, and you wanted information specific about the child who was picking on your child. Just because you are a Board member does not mean that you have any greater right to that information than anyone else would, because your Superintendent of Schools and your administration has an obligation to keep student information confidential unless you need to do it to perform your responsibilities as a Board member. Not so that you can intervene into a matter that is specific to your child that has nothing to do with your obligations as a Board member. I don't want you to interpret that to mean that if, in fact, you also are a parent, that you shed all rights as a parent, because you certainly don't. You still have the right to be a parent and to advocate for your child. But what you don't have the right to do is to intervene and request information you otherwise wouldn't be entitled to, or to second-guess maybe the actions that administration have taken with respect to your child as a Board member. So, let me give you an example. I had an example recently where a Board member was very upset, not here, in another district, with how a principal had handled something with respect to her son and an illness that he was having. And in the conversation with the principal, which she was there as a parent, she said, "Well, this is very upsetting, and I'm going to have to talk to the Board of Education about this." The principal, rightfully so, was taken aback and said, "What do you mean you're going to talk to the Board of Education about this? I'm talking to you as a parent about your child. I am also a unionized staff person who has very significant protections, both under my contract and under the law. It is not appropriate for you to have this conversation with Board of Education members, because it's almost as if you're evaluating the way that I have handled this, and that is not your right and responsibility to do." So, as you can imagine, that has caused some significant friction. And so, those are the kinds of things that we want to be aware of. Obviously, the role of the chairperson. Jen, congratulations on your appointment. The role of the chairperson really, obviously, is to conduct the meetings. You also serve as a liaison between the rest of the Board of Education members and the Superintendent of Schools. Again, I've been very impressed with how this Board has always conducted itself. I think that you understand very clearly that you can't all inundate the Superintendent of Schools, right? It's really important that most of our communications to the Superintendent of Schools are being channeled through our chairperson, so that our Superintendent of Schools can go about the day-to-day. It isn't feeling inundated by nine different members. So, those are the types of things that the Chair would intervene and get involved with. The other thing, too, with respect to, let's say, legal expenses. Typically, only the Superintendent of Schools and the Chair of the Board of Education is authorized for legal expenditures. You'd be the only person who could authorize such expenditures. The other thing that comes up a lot of times about the role of the chairperson is whether you have the right to vote on motions, and whether you should be preserved for, in the event of a tie. You absolutely, under Robert's rules, have the opportunity to vote, and you should never be told, or shouldn't be suggested otherwise. So, some of your other duties, we talked about this, but the confidentiality and the educational need-to-know. I just really want to stress, in the expulsion hearings, for instance, this would really be one of the only times where you would receive this kind of information, because in order to do your job, you need to know what the allegations are against that student. But other than that, you shouldn't have information pertaining to our students. For instance, a parental complaint. You might get parents, and you might know a lot of people in the community. You might be in the grocery store, and you might have a parent stop you and complain about a teacher, or complain to you about something related to their child. What would be the appropriate way to handle that? Kristin, if someone were to stop you in the grocery store and say, "I have a significant issue. I'm not happy with the way the administration is handling what I perceive to be a bullying incident between my child and two other girls."
Well, I would certainly listen to the parent, because that's part of my responsibility is to represent the parents in the community. So, I think we do have an obligation, even though we might not have an obligation to act on that particular complaint. But I do think it's very important that the parents understand that those are the exact things that they can come to us to discuss. And with that being said, I would then advise the parent and ask them if they had gone through the normal chain of command, so to speak, and contacted their administration. Furthermore, if they felt so obligated, I would invite them to attend a Board of Ed meeting and personally address the entire Board if they felt that they needed to be heard amongst the community in the public comment. Lastly, I would ask them to please document their issues and send it along in writing.
Right. So, you raise a really good point. So, I agree with most everything that you've said, Kristin, which was, you articulated very excellent. So, obviously, if I'm going to stop you in the grocery store, and I am one of your constituents, you're absolutely right. You should be listening to everything that I have to say. And then, you certainly should say, "It's very important that you bring this up to the Superintendent, or to the building principal, or the appropriate administrator or supervisor." Where I get a little concerned is if we go beyond that, or if we're encouraging parents to bring certain situations, particularly as it might pertain to our staff, to public comment. The reason why I would say that is, let's say, you have an issue where someone is saying, "I'm not happy with the evaluation or the performance of this administrator." They bring it to your attention. You now have all of this information. Then, your Superintendent of Schools needs to make an employment decision pertaining to that administrator. Well, you're going to sit as judge and jury should anything related or pertaining to that administrator's employment come to your attention. Because if I'm an administrator, and I'm being disciplined by my Superintendent of Schools because she doesn't like the way that I handled something, I have significant contractual rights, and I also have significant rights under 10-151. And guess what? When I bring those contractual rights, or those statutory rights forward, it's the Board of Education that has the final decision as to what is appropriate with respect to my employment. So, we want to be careful that while we absolutely want to listen to our constituents, we want to make sure that they have an opportunity to be heard. We want to make sure that as Board members, we're not getting overly involved in the day-to-day process and how those things are being handled, because we have to preserve some level of impartiality should it come up the food chain. And so, that's when I'm talking about some of the grievance hearings and the teacher tenure hearings. That's very important that we understand what our role is there. So, I'm going to do a quick scenario. I'm going to move on to the second scenario here. So, this is along the lines of what we're just talking about. So, if you use your little responders in front of you. You have a Board member who's Facebook friend of the teacher. In a post on her Facebook page, the teacher complains that her principal unfairly denied her three days of personal leave to attend nature's classroom in a neighboring school district to serve as a chaperone for her fifth-grade son. The Board member calls the principal to find out what the problem is. The teacher files a grievance which is denied at the lower steps and is now before the Board. Can the Board member participate in the grievance hearing? Or does the Board member have a conflict of interest preventing him now from participating? So, what do you think? So, on your responders, the A, B, and C correspond to the responders. Okay. So, here's our data. So, 29% of you say yes, the Board member can participate, 57 say no. Anyone want to share their answer?
We don't want to share our answers.
You don't? Well, Karen did.
I'll share. I think no, because if the Board member has gotten information and spoken to the teacher outside, there's already, the Board member needs to recuse him or her son.
Right. Because here's the thing. In Connecticut, we have significant employment rights, right? Significant collective bargaining rights. This teacher is going to have the right to due process. If they feel that they can't get a fair hearing before the Board of Ed, because we have Board of Ed members who have gotten too intimately involved in details, that's potentially problematic, and it can potentially unravel or undo the hard work of our administration or Superintendent to bring this to this level. So, we have to be very, very careful. You know, if someone approaches you and starts talking to you about a personnel matter, the best thing you can do is say, you know, as a Board of Education member... best thing you can do is say, you know, "As a Board of Education member, thank you for bringing this to my attention, but I cannot discuss and I cannot opine on personnel matters." The best thing you can do is to bring that forward to the superintendent. Because guess what? You're going to have an opportunity to be involved if it's going to come up the food chain or if it's something very significant. Like, let's say we have a very significant DCF issue. The superintendent is going to be able to fill you in on the details that you need to know to do your job. And we can do that through an attorney-client communication where an attorney can come and advise you on what your legal rights are and she can get you up to speed on the issue while still being mindful of certain due process rights of our employees. So it remains a balancing act. So one thing I just wanted to touch upon quickly is some social media consideration. So the previous scenario talked about Facebook friends. This is coming up a lot with board members. I don't want you to think that because you are a board member, again, you shed your rights as a parent, because you certainly don't. It's just that fine balancing act. You also don't shed your First Amendment rights. You have a constitutional right to engage in Facebook. If you want to go on Facebook and you want to post something, you have every right to do that. What we want to be mindful of, though, is if you're getting involved on a back-and-forth on social media about something pertaining to board business, be very careful how that can impact you here, right? We don't want to get overly involved in a discussion or an assert opinion particularly on a personnel or a student matter. Or like, for instance, I had a situation recently where the superintendent of schools and the Board of Education were talking about separation. One of the board members, which obviously that's highly confidential and should not be discussed when you're in the midst of these very confidential negotiations about a separation of an employment contract. Board of Education member went on social media because people were abuzz about it and said, "Don't worry, we're working on it. We will have her fired soon." Very problematic. Because we not only have a board member who has divulged confidential information from an executive session, but they've now done it on social media and they've now interfered with potentially the implementation of a board policy decision or interfered with your duties as school board members. That's very problematic, right? And so potentially, if the Board of Education wanted to, they could move forward with censure procedures, right? And censure that individual. It also had the impact of really impeding the deal. And so we ended up having to pay more through that negotiated settlement than we otherwise would have wanted to because of that post. So we have to be very problematic that we don't get overly engaged in social media. The other thing we want to be aware of is if we want to say something as a board member on social media, make sure you're saying it as Jen, as Tom, as Chris, not as a member of the Board of Education, right? Because you should be speaking in one voice through your chairperson, right? Because that's the most cohesive, collective way to function. But if you are, if you're going to write a letter to the editor, you feel very strongly about penning something related to an issue of importance to you, my recommendation would be that you sign it as an individual and not a member of the Board of Education, particularly on social media, and you try to make that distinction clear. All right. So let's just talk a little bit about meeting and your meeting conduct. So this is going to get, especially for those of you who are new, this is going to get you up to speed quickly on some of your conduct here. So what is a meeting under the law? This is what a meeting is. You are a public agency, you are subject to the Freedom of Information Act. What does that mean? Connecticut has the most liberal, most transparent, open sunshine laws, which means almost everything you do is subject to public consumption and disclosure unless there is a very narrow exception. That also means if I decide that I want to use my personal Gmail account, but I'm emailing Jen about board business, I can't hide behind the fact that I've used my personal email account. Anything that I do that is specific to board business is subject to FOI, whether it's on my Gmail account, my Hotmail account, or my Bristol account. Which is why my advice to board members is always to use your Bristol account, because if you ever get an FOI request, it's very easy for you or IT to go through and figure out what is subject to disclosure and what isn't if it's all on the Bristol system. So we want to be very mindful about that. So here's a definition of a meeting. Any hearing or other proceeding of a public agency, any convening or assembly of a quorum. So you're a nine board members, so a quorum for you is five, but any of your subcommittees are also subject to FOI and the posting requirements and the minute requirements, just like you are here at your regular education meeting. Also, any communication by or to a quorum, whether that's in person or by means of electronic equipment to discuss or act upon a matter over which you have jurisdiction. So if we start engaging in emails and Jen sends an email, we've got five other people who have now responded to that email and you're acting on board business, let's say it's, "Are we going to approve the administrator's contract tonight?" And five of you start responding, you have now held an illegal meeting. What does that mean? It means someone could file a FOIA complaint to you and you could be subject to fines, certain training, and it certainly would cost you money to defend that proceeding up at the commission. So we want to be very mindful about that. Okay. What is not a meeting? So when is it okay for you to be in executive session? When is it okay for you to be in what's called, under the law, as a non-meeting? So anytime you have a meeting of a personnel search committee. So when you were looking for your new superintendent of schools, what I recall is that you appointed the entire board as part of that personnel search committee to interview candidates and to determine who was going to be your next superintendent of schools. All of that can be done once you have appointed the board members as part of the personnel search committee without complying with FOIA, which means that you can have meetings without having to post them and the public is not invited to those meetings. If you have a chance meeting, so let's say you all end up at the football game at Thanksgiving, you all have the right to be there. However, if we look and say, "Hey, six of us are here from the board watching this football game," and you take advantage of that situation and start to engage in some board business, that's going to be problematic. Strategy or negotiations with respect to collective bargaining, those are by definition, under the law, non-meetings, which means it doesn't fit into the definition of meeting. So you can have, and we've had all of our negotiation sessions, and you don't need to post for those meetings and the public is not entitled to be at those meetings. You can do a caucus of a single political party. Perfectly appropriate, don't have to post for it. However, if your Republican Party were to meet and you invite the superintendent of schools in or you invite myself in, you have waived that privilege. The caucus actually has to be those who are registered and affiliated with that party within your board. An administrative or staff meeting, so obviously if your superintendent of schools meets with her cabinet, that is not subject to the Freedom of Information Act. So you can see, very narrow exceptions for what does not constitute a meeting. We also have our three types of meeting. We have our regular, our special, and our emergency. So of course, tonight, we are here for a regular meeting, right? We know our regular meetings. You have to share with the town clerk what the schedule of your annual meetings are going to be by January 31st and all of your agendas have to be posted at least 24 hours in advance or you can't hold the meeting. If you were here, so we're at a regular meeting tonight and you said, "Uh-oh, I forgot to put on the agenda the potential ratification of the administrator's negotiations," you would have the ability at a regular meeting by two-thirds vote to add that as a new business item. If it is a special meeting, you don't have the ability to do that. You are beholden to the agenda in front of you and you cannot add a new business item. Minutes must be available for public inspection within seven days of the meeting. Our special meeting, again, those are meetings that are not filed with the town clerk. You can convene a special meeting for almost anything. You just have to make sure that you post it 24 hours in advance. And as I said, the business has to be limited to what is on the agenda. There is no flexibility there. Emergency meetings. Now, have you ever, in your time, and I don't know, maybe Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Wilson could tell you, have you ever had to call an emergency meeting in your time, ever here?
Not that I attended.
Not that you attended, okay. So, emergency meetings are going to be strictly construed. So I once had a client say, "Oh, if we don't approve this grant today, we won't get the grant. So I have to convene an emergency meeting." I said, "That's not a purpose for an emergency meeting. You can convene it, but the problem is if you convene an illegal meeting, the FOIA commission has the ability to null and void any action you've taken." So we have to be very mindful of our FOIA obligations. An emergency meeting, the only time that I've seen an emergency meeting approved is in events like a new town or something of that significance. So this is rarely used and really should not be considered. And anytime you really need to have a meeting, you should be looking to have a special meeting. But if you were to hold an emergency meeting, don't need the 24 hours requirement, but then you're going to have an obligation to, in the minutes, include a statement saying what the nature of the emergency was, and then you have to file those minutes within 72 hours of the meeting. And you will be pressed upon. So a lot of people look at emergency meetings as you're trying to circumvent something. Okay. So here's another scenario. A parent's all over social media after her daughter was suspended for insubordination two days before the prom. Parent calls you and every other board member with her concerns, complaining about the fact that her daughter has only one junior prom in her life and will not be able to wear the expensive dress she bought. In light of the pressing circumstances, you talk it over with a couple of board members and with the agreement of the chair. You all decide by email to convene an emergency meeting to review and possibly rescind the action by the administration. Is this legal? What do you think? And unfortunately, I don't see a slide, but anyone want to just say whether they think that's legal?
It's not.
No.
And it's not appropriate. She should have, she's got to accept the consequences.
She should have accepted the consequences, that's right. And not only should we not be convening an emergency meeting, but we also shouldn't be talking over email. All right. So let's talk a little bit about conducting a meeting. So here's another scenario. So you have board member Mal content has been causing issues for the Nutmeg Board. During meetings, he verbally attacks the motives of other members and staff and it's suspected that he leaked information from an executive session, which we know is a no-no. He would visit school buildings unannounced, demanding to be able to visit classrooms to check on underperforming teachers. But the last draw for the board was when he voted to approve the new teacher's contract even though his wife was a teacher in the district. In a special meeting where Mal was not in attendance, they voted eight, nothing to oust him from the board. Is that legal? All right. Which statement is correct here? A board member can never vote on a spouse's contract. The board member should not be serving on the board because his spouse is a district employee. The board's vote to remove the members from the board was invalid since he was not in attendance or none of the above. Okay. Anyone, who went with none of the above?
I did.
Okay. Why?
Well, because in each case, you can serve on the board, you can vote on contracts, and you can not vote to remove someone.
So the only place where I don't agree is in Section A. So if your spouse, let's say, is a teacher and you're on the board, my advice is always going to be, one, you have to check your city charter. Yep?
I have a question.
Yeah.
You're a sitting board member.
Yeah.
Should be allowed to apply for a job with the Board of Ed?
No. So if you're a sitting board member and you want to-
It's happened numerous times, sir.
And you want to apply for a job, my, if I had gotten that question, I would say that person should resign before they apply. Because, you know, I would be concerned about the undue influence the board member might have while they're applying as a sitting board member.
So you agree with me that this shouldn't ever happen, ever?
I would say that if that comes up, the person should be highly encouraged to resign before they apply for the job. Is it illegal for them to apply for the job while they're a board member? No.
Right.
But it is illegal for them to be on the board and be employed by the school district. So from an appearance of impropriety, my advice would be that they should resign before applying.
I believe we've actually recently passed a new policy on that. And there has to be a certain number of months.
Yes, Chris.
90 days.
Do you have a revolving door?
Yeah. Commissioner has to resign and cannot apply for a job with this district for 90 days.
Yeah. And the 90 days is great. There's nothing that requires that. They could resign and literally apply the next day. But I like the 90-day rule.
Was that policy passed prior or was that just passed recently?
That was just passed within the past. I think that was passed at our last meeting.
So the other thing that we want to be mindful of is, so if my spouse is a teacher and I'm on the Board of Ed and I'm on the district's insurance and I benefit from what might have been negotiated from an insurance standpoint, it's really not okay for me to also be voting on that contract. I should be recusing myself. You might also, if you looked at your city code of ethics, it might also state that very clearly. So you want to be mindful of what your code of ethics says. And if Dr. Carbone were to ask me, I would say that board member should recuse him or herself and they certainly should not be participating in negotiations.
I have a question for that.
Yeah.
How would you do that if it's four to four and she was the fifth? Now you have a four and four and that fifth person recused itself, so who's going to decide this contract now?
Well, if it's a four to four, which hopefully it isn't because you guys-
Mercury's Law.
Okay. So if it's a four to four, it doesn't pass. And then you'd have to go back and renegotiate with the union.
Again, but at the end of the day, he's still going to recuse himself, so.
Right, I know. But then what you're going to have to do is you're going to have to go back and you're going to have to renegotiate something that you know is at least going to get a majority vote. But there's, there really is, and again, you should check your city charter, it's really problematic for a board member to do that. And I would be concerned, and I've had this happen in other places, where someone's going to file an ethics complaint against that board member. And so I want to protect you all from that potential. Okay. All right. The other thing too is, board members cannot be removed from office. So I had a scenario where a board member in one of the towns I represent went rogue, moved to Jamaica, no one knew where he was, but he never resigned. And they couldn't kick him off, they couldn't vote to kick him off. And then finally, after like two or three months of negotiation, we finally got his resignation letter. But no matter what they do, you don't have the right to kick them off. They could be arrested. I had a board member a couple of months ago arrested, you probably read about in the paper, for hosting a party with teenage kids. You can't vote that member off. It is up to that board member to resign. What you can do, and the only thing you really can do, is censure a board member, which really is nothing more than a public reprimand. And it's a lot to go through the censuring process. I have gone through it, but it's much more of a public reprimand than anything else. And so yes, it's certainly embarrassing for that member, but that's really the extent of what you can do. Certainly, the board chair, though, has the ability. So let's say if you had someone who was particularly problematic on a negotiations committee or on a policy committee. I had a situation where a board member was very belligerent with administrators during a policy meeting. And it happened time and time again. And finally, the board chairperson said, "If you can't conduct yourself in a professional manner, I'm taking you off the policy committee and you have the right to do that under your bylaws." So there are things that you can do. You can strip them from any committee membership, you can publicly reprimand them, but that's really the extent of it. Hopefully, we never have that.
We will not.
Yeah. So we talked about some of these conflicts of interest. All right. So let's talk a little bit quickly about executive session because this is the most common violation of FOIA. All Boards of Ed violate the use of executive session. So we have the Nutmeg Board is in a special budget meeting. It learns of dire economic news that meant significant staffing cuts were necessary. Knowing that the board would need to discuss and decide the elimination of those positions and not wishing to needlessly distress its employees, the chair added an executive session into the agenda to discuss, quote, "personnel matters." With a five to three vote, the board entered executive session. After an hour of discussion, the board members agreed, without a vote, to direct the superintendent to cut 10 staff positions. Which statement is incorrect? The board's agenda must state that the board's going into executive session. A vote to go into executive session must be by two-thirds. Stating that the reason for executive session for personnel reasons is insufficient, the board cannot add an item to the agenda during a special meeting of the board. Okay. All right. Let's break this down.
Now, wait a minute. There's nine of us voting, right?
Oh, maybe Kristin vote. Oh, maybe Chris didn't vote yet, there you go. So let's break this down a little bit. Which statement is incorrect? The board's agenda must state that the board will go into executive session. Correct or incorrect?
It's correct.
It's not correct.
You said you could add it.
So executive session is a status of a meeting. You can't say on an agenda 24 hours in advance, "Executive session for the purpose of discussing X," because you don't know if you're going to have two-thirds vote to go into executive session. But what you want to do is put the public on notice that that's likely going to happen, because you're likely going to have two-thirds vote. So if it's, let's say, to discuss an attorney-client communication related to a DCF matter, in parentheses, you'd put "proposed for executive session," so our public is aware that they're likely going to be asked to leave, or you're going to go upstairs to your executive session room. But it not being on the agenda is not fatal to you still being able to go into executive session by asking for a motion and getting the decision. So that's important. Everything else is correct. You need two-thirds. Stating personnel reasons absolutely insufficient happens all the time. That is not a proper reason for executive session. If you look under the FOIA statute, it's very clear that it's the discussion concerning the appointment, the employment, the evaluation, or the health of a public school employee or a Board of Education member. Those are the only reasons that you can talk about a personnel matter. So in our example, that's not a personnel matter. Yes, it's a matter pertaining to staffing issues, but it's not specific to an individual and his or her employment or evaluation. So that's the error there. So the only way that you could have properly convened into an executive session to discuss your staffing issues is with an attorney-client communication that lays out legal implications for what would happen if you had to engage in those staff reductions. Otherwise, it's an inappropriate executive session. Again, the reason why we want to make sure that we comply with FOIA is the commission has broad powers to null and void any action you take and impose some significant fines if you don't comply. Okay, so we talked about, these are the other reasons you can go into executive session. So personnel matters for the specific reasons that I just told you provided, let's say you're going to talk about the superintendent's contract, you've told Dr. Carbone she has an opportunity to have that discussion held in open session. She can say, "No, I don't want it held in open session," and then you have every right as the board to exclude her from the executive session. She can't demand to be part of that executive session. She can only demand that you hold it in open session. Pending claims of litigation, you actually have to be being sued. So it is not enough to say, "Mom and dad threatened to go to due process, let's talk about an executive session." Mom and dad actually had to have filed a due process claim against you. Security devices in real estate. So you can discuss, let's say, like where you're going to put your cameras, where you're going to have other security measures. That can all be discussed in executive session, because obviously, we don't want to give the public the benefit of knowing some of our security features, right? So that's an appropriate executive session. Confidential documents, like the attorney-client communication I talked to you about, and then of course, documents related to collective bargaining strategy are also an appropriate executive session. But you actually have to have documents to review. Okay. When you're in an executive session, again, we talked about, doesn't have to be an agenda item, it's a means of dealing with that agenda item. You are going to specify who's invited into the executive session, so it's very important that the chair says, "We are inviting Dr. Carbone, Jessica Ritter into our executive session," and the minutes have to reflect that. You do not take action in an executive session. You never vote in executive session. Every vote has to be done in open session. We also don't vote to come out of executive session. So lots of boards will say, "Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?" That's an illegal vote, because you're voting in executive session. What you want to do is say, "I now declare that we are in open session." And of course, you're not to disclose anything discussed in an executive session. That's extremely important, that all that board members are aware of that. So I don't know, Dr. Carbone, where we are on time, we just have a few more slides.
You have about 15 minutes.
Oh, okay, so we're good. All right. So another scenario, so it's time for the Nutmeg Board to elect officers. In the week leading up to the annual meeting, the internet was full of emails among board members soliciting support from other members. In addition, board members had caucused with their respective party chairs to decide on who would be the next chair. At the meeting, Mal content nominates Penny Pincher as the next chair. Infuriated, Bomb-Bass, excuse me, sends an angry text message to Mal saying, "What gives? I thought we had a deal." Mal responds, "Sorry, Penny's supporting me for vice chair, you snooze, you lose." So which statement is correct? It's illegal for board members to commit support on an issue before the meeting. A majority of board members cannot discuss board business via email. Electronic communication between board members is okay, as long as it's one-on-one. Board members cannot caucus to discuss board issues. Right. So we want to be mindful, now here's the thing, let's say Jen says, "We have to schedule a special meeting." Jen, you have every right to send to everyone here, "We're trying to schedule a special meeting, does, you know, December 6th at 3 o'clock work for everyone?" That's okay for people to respond and say, "Yes, it works for me," or "No, it doesn't." Now, all those communications are still subject to FOI. So if your local newspaper says, "I want to see every email between board members about a December 6th meeting," we're going to have to hand those over. But it's okay, because you're not engaging on board business per se, it's not an item for discussion, it's scheduling. Perfectly appropriate. You might also want to just send an email saying, "We are confirmed for December 6th at 3 o'clock, please don't reply to this email." It's important that we encourage people, once that date was set, that we don't encourage a reply all, that we just know people are going to be there, and you've informed your board members of that. One-on-one is okay too, right? So if Chris wants to send an email to Karen, that's okay. But remember, anything you put in that email is potentially subject to disclosure, and so if you don't want it on the front page of the Hartford Current, don't write it. So we just want to be careful about that. Okay, so this is the email communication that we've talked to. So if five of us start engaging in an email discussion, let's say about the administrator's contract, we are now engaging on a board business over email, and we have not posted for that meeting, because we have five members going back and forth about how they're going to vote on that contract, that's not only problematic and an illegal meeting, but of course, also not emails that we later want disclosed. Okay, so we talked about that. So then just talking a little bit about meeting procedures, right? So you guys follow Robert's Rules. Right? So through your bylaws, you have adopted formal procedures in how you conduct your meeting, right? The important thing is that you conduct our meeting professionally, everyone has a level of decorum, and your typical topics for meeting procedures are going to be dates and times of meetings, how your agendas are created, and quorum and voting requirements. So this is all set out in your bylaws. So particularly for our new board members, if you haven't had a chance to read through your bylaws, it's very important and also very eye-opening once you've gone through those bylaws. So some key concept of Robert's Rules of Order, and it's really important to make sure that our meetings are cohesive and effective. So we deal with one subject at a time, right? We allow for divergent viewpoints, right? Now, this board, I know, has been respectful and great about that, but it is important that we allow for both parties' or other opinions to be heard on matters, as long as everyone is conducting themselves in a professional manner, even when airing may be an unpopular view. You recognize and record negative votes, you enforce that decorum, you confine debate to the merits of the pending question, so if we're dealing with a question in front of us, we don't go off on a tangent, we make sure that we are focused on the item in front of us, and then we provide for a final decision and disposition through a motion and a vote. So this just shows you how we're going to conduct that business. You need a formal motion, which you all know, and this is very basic, but as part of Robert's Rules, you cannot take an action unless you have a formal motion in front of you. So let's do-
Thank you, sorry.
So here's how we deal with motions, and I saw Jen do it with ease earlier today. So, you know, if Mr. Wilson wants to speak, Jen is going to recognize Mr. Wilson, the member's going to state the motion for the board, the motion has to be seconded by another member, the chair can then restate the motion. I mean, this is what Robert's Rules would suggest, but I know some chairs do that differently. So that's not something that you have to do. And then, once the question is put before you, again, it has to be disposed before you move on to a further action. And then, once adopted, it has to become an official part of your record. And I can't tell you how important it is that we make sure that we have very good records of all of the action we've taken. I can't tell you how many times I've had to go back to meeting minutes four or five years ago to make sure that something was actually approved. So that's actually very important and can certainly come in handy, particularly if you're facing, unfortunately, a very difficult, sensitive matter. Okay. So let's move on, given that we only have a few more minutes. I want to do this voting scenario. So you have a Nutmeg Board considering the approval of a biology textbook made controversial by its numerous references to evolution. When it's time to vote, six of the members abstained from voting. With only Bob in opposition, the vote was two to one to approve the textbook. But Bob wasn't done, pointing out that the chairperson was one of the two votes in favor of the textbook, and since under Robert's Rules, the chairperson can't vote, the textbook had not been approved. Penny Pincher added, "Besides, you need at least five votes to approve, or at least a majority of board members present." So which statement is correct here? Abstentions count as no votes? The chairperson can only vote in the event of a tie? The motion was properly approved by a majority of members present in voting? And motions must be approved by a majority of the members in attendance? All right, what does everyone think? Chris, what do you think?
D.
D. What does anyone else think? Anyone go with C? You went with C, Karen?
I did.
Okay, do you want to explain?
It just, I think if you're there, you can abstain, and that's, that's kind of a vote.
You can abstain, so it's not a vote yes or no.
But it's-
But it comes down to a majority of those who are present in voting. So in that situation, even though you had six abstentions, you had three people who voted, and the majority there is two to one. And so that motion carries, even though six have abstained. Now, there are some very finite examples where you need an absolute majority of the board. So for instance, your superintendent of schools, the approval of her position has to be an absolute majority of the board. So in that scenario, that would not work. But that's a statutory exception that's laid out in 10-157 that also says that she's the CEO of our schools. But absent that very minor example, it has to be those, the present in voting would So, board member voting, now how do you, do you guys do a voice vote? Do you show by hands, which way?
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. So that's perfectly appropriate. Some people do it by showing of hands.
Unless there's a call for the roll.
Unless there's a call for the roll, absolutely. So I just want to move quickly to, because I know we only have a little bit more time. So also, what's built into the presentation is just what a point of order would be, a motion to reconsider versus a motion to rescind. You know, you can certainly rescind action that you've taken as a board. When you rescind something, you do it at a subsequent meeting. When you reconsider something, it would have to be done at that same meeting. The motion to reconsider doesn't happen very often, it's typically a motion to rescind, you would have a change of heart, and at a subsequent meeting, someone might say, "I want to revisit that issue on the textbook." But one thing that I think is important to talk about is public comment. So I just want to get to this public comment scenario, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. It was never a good sign when there was a crowd in the boardroom before a meeting. Sure enough, at public comment, a parent got up and began complaining about a teacher at the high school. Before she could get very far with her statement, a board member interrupted her, saying, "We don't allow comments about individual teachers, as that is a personnel matter." The chair then asked if the long line at the podium planned on speaking about the same teacher. When they all nodded yes, Bob made a motion to suspend public comment for that meeting. The motion is approved unanimously. All right, which statement is correct? Since there's no requirement to have public comment, the board is entitled to suspend it. Speakers cannot discuss individual students and staff publicly. The board cannot allow negative comments about individual teachers unless the teacher's available to respond, or none of the above. Okay. None of the above is correct. Anyone, okay, so let's, let's talk this through. So, public comment, you actually don't have to allow for public comment. Now, of course, to me, and I'm sure to you, that's one of the most important things you can do at a meeting, so that your constituents have an opportunity to share issues of concern with you. But you actually don't have to allow it. Most boards do. What you can do is regulate the manner of speech, but you can't discriminate based on content. So if I come up here and I rave about Dr. Carbone, and then my neighbor gets up here and starts saying not-so-nice things about Dr. Carbone, you can't shut that person down because you don't like what they're saying, because you have opened your forum to allow people to discuss Dr. Carbone's performance at public comment. So if you were to do that, if you were to shut down my neighbor, you have violated my neighbor's First Amendment rights. What you can do to avoid that is you can decide as a Board of Ed, and I've had some Board of Eds do this, to limit the public forum, which would mean that as part of your everyday, when you went through what you expect people to do when they are here at the podium, and how you expect them to present themselves professionally and to exhibit a certain level of decorum, you could also, through a board policy, say, "We're going to limit the public forum so that people cannot come here and talk about staff or students." You have to be mindful, though, that if you do that, that means they also can't come here and tell you how great your superintendent is, or how great your principal, or your business manager, or your HR director are. So you'd have to be mindful that if you're limiting that public forum, you're limiting any, whether it be pro or con. And then, of course, you guys have already done that you have time limits, you insist on the decorum, and the one thing that you did very well is that public comment is reserved for the public. It is not a time for our Board of Education members to engage in a back-and-forth with whomever the speaker is, right? That would not be an appropriate way to conduct business. And so we would frown upon that, and Robert's Rules would also say the same thing. So I know we only have, I'm happy to take any questions, there's a lot of, you know, other materials in the PowerPoint that you can certainly keep, but if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Through the chair.
The only request I have is that your PowerPoint wasn't included in our material, so can that be sent to the board members?
Absolutely. Yep, I can email that. Okay, well, thank, oh, sorry.
I was just going to thank you-
Oh, okay.
-for the board for the presentation.
Okay, well, thank you all, and congratulations to you all again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
So we're now going to head into our new business. We did discuss previously that the committee assignments were going to fall under this. May I please have a motion to approve the committee assignments as written?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes, thank you. We're now going to discuss building reports, and we are going to get building reports from various people. The first person that I'm going to bring up to discuss- The first person that I'm going to bring up to discuss the Memorial Boulevard Intro-District
Good evening, Commissioners. Since our last update, November Board Ed meeting, I'm happy to report out on the following. The final decision, the design decisions are being made with a focus on the interior features of our building. Majority of the questions have been regarding the theater space and seating. And at this time, I'm happy to report that the new design does incorporate provisions for seating that brings the theater into compliance with local codes, as well as with the ADA. We held our second community forum on Thursday, the 21st of November. We had a good community participation. We had approximately 50 attendees at this meeting. And at this forum, we did hear from the architects regarding the design considerations. We have, we're in receipt of a 3D model of the project, which is in the lobby downstairs when you came in. You may have noticed that against the wall, along with the new elevation drawings, as well as floor plan proposals. We had an update from Carly Forten, the Director of the Office of Teaching and Learning, regarding current programming and configurations. And we had a wonderful slideshow that was put together by a former teacher and photographer, Terry Marcel, and that was chronicling the current status of the Memorial Boulevard School. Lastly, I'm happy to report that the Board of Finance did approve a request to increase the total project cost. The original cost had been projected at just under $54 million. The Board of Finance did approve an increase to $63 million. And as you may recall from previous discussions, the increase is due in large part to issues present in this building that is over 100 years old, and the costs that are associated with removal and remediation of environmental issues. The next meeting of the Memorial Boulevard Intro-District Arts Magnet Building Committee will be tomorrow night at 6:30 in Room 36. And if you are interested in updates, you can follow us on Twitter at BuildingMBIAMS, or you can check out our Building Committee tab on the Board of Ed website or the City official website. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Through the chair. So the Board of Finance approved an approximate 20% increase in the budgetary cost of the project?
I can give you the exact figure. So the original total was $54,890,306. The original city share would have been $19,798,905. The revised total is $63 million. The revised city share is $25,319,147. That's an increased total of $8,109,700.
So although the Board of Finance agreed with the extra monetary cost of the project, it's clear that the public is also aware that their contributions to the project have also increased?
That should be clear from the Board of Finance meeting.
I did have another question, and it just left me.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
It's gone.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Dieter.
Thank you.
Next up, we'll have Jill Brown come to discuss South Side and Stafford School.
Good evening again. The Stafford School Roof Committee met November 21st upstairs in Room 36. They discussed Silver Petritelli Architects, discussed the roof walk and scope review that they did in October 29th, and construction documents and specs are now underway. For the month of December, we expect to complete the construction documents. The state will review those documents in the month of January. The job will go out to bid in February, and we expect to award that bid in the month of April. Construction will start in June, and substantial completion will be done in August, as your school starts. Our next meeting will be January 16th at 5:30 in Room 36. Any questions about Stafford?
Through the chair. Before we leave this agenda item, can I, my question came back. Am I allowed to ask it? We're still on building reports, right?
Yes.
So my only other question was the increase in cost that was related to the existing issues with the building, and obviously, the mandated requirements that go along with that. Were those issues with the building known when the study was done not to keep the building as a school? When that vote was made a long time ago?
So if I understand your question, the issues that have been, some of the issues have arisen due to the forensic analysis that was done, which include pouring into walls and floors. There were some surprises that came about, particularly in the flooring. The primary driver with the additional cost is there's been a change in practice at the state level, and OSCAR, which is the Office of School Grants and Construction Review, is requiring that we remove all hot materials from schools. Previous practice was to allow encapsulation, so we would do limited remediation, and then we would encapsulate any environmental concerns that were there. We can no longer do that. It's requiring removal, which has driven up the cost because we have, that material has to be taken out of the building and then replaced, and then we have the additional oversight of the state historic preservation, who is asking that anything that is removed is replaced with something that replicates what was there. So we're managing that issue on two fronts that are causing an increase to the cost.
So if I could just summarize then, some of the issues with remediating hazardous materials were known, but the plan at the time was a different plan to mitigate those. And now, the rules have changed, so now we have to change the plan to mitigate those. And then, some additional identified building items came after construction started? You said once they started pouring into?
Yeah, so the construction hasn't started. The exploratory exploration, the forensic analysis of that site, of that building, which is part of the pre-construction process.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the South Side School Mechanical upgrades, the HVAC project there. This committee also met on November 21st. The engineering firm is Weston and Sampson, and we reviewed options for design for conventional system replacement. Construction documents and specs are now underway for this project, and the schedule is somewhat similar to the roofing schedule at Stafford. Construction documents will be complete by January. This will also go out to bid in February, and we're looking to award in the month of May. We will start construction in June and complete major interior construction in the month of August. Our next meeting is January 16th, following Stafford Roof, at 6:30 in Room 36.
Through the chair. What specifically are you replacing in that building? Is it boiler replacement or something like that?
Yes. It's an HVAC project.
Okay, boiler or air conditioning?
There is boiler replacement in the project and air conditioning I will have to get back to you on, because I think that there is air conditioning for part of the building.
Through the chair. I'm going to have to talk to our lawyer over here about conflicts of interest. I may end up bidding on boiler replacement.
Okay.
Contact with that.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. Any other discussion?
Thank you. Thank you. Speaking of building committees, following the election, we needed to appoint new building committee representatives to two schools, so the following appointments have been made for the Stafford School Roof Project. The illustrious Karen Vibert will be taking over, and for South Side HVAC, that will be handled by the lovely Shelby Pounds. Thank you very much, ladies, for volunteering your time for those committees. Moving on to liaison reports and also information, I will start, we can do either or because there are not many liaisons at the moment, so I will start to my left. Chairman Wilson?
No report.
Just a quick comment. I am going to be attending on Monday the State Relations Committee meeting at CAEB to discuss issues that they are going to be bringing to the legislature for 2020. The main issue that I want to focus on is what Commissioner Wilson talked about at the CAEB conference, which is to really push for the state to meet its obligation when it comes to the excess cost share.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Pounds? Commissioner Gosey?
Of course, I have to talk about West Bristol. Last week, West Bristol celebrated the fall sports teams with a pep rally and a student versus staff volleyball game. The celebration of family lunch was a huge success. I'm really loud, sorry. Our chefs prepared a delicious meal. The eighth grade bottle-and-can drive is well underway. All proceeds will continue to benefit the Bristol Veterans Council. West Bristol welcomed the K through 5 families for the Stories and Snacks Event. And on Saturday, December 14th, the annual vendor fair will be from 10 to 4. It is an amazing vendor fair with many, many things to buy in both gymnasiums. So if you have last-minute holiday shopping, I suggest you check it out. Now, moving on to Commissioner Giantonio.
Yes, I have a liaison report from the Greater Bristol Special Education PTO. Their next meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 10th at 6:30 at the Bristol Public Library. The title of the meeting will be Prepare for PPT Meetings, and the attorney, Melissa Gagni, will be joining the group there, and she will be guiding them through the entire PPT process and how to prepare, all the way to what you should do to follow up after the meeting is over. Whether it's the initial PPT meeting to determine eligibility, or an annual review, Attorney Gagni will give you tips to walk into your PPT as prepared as possible. This will be a roundtable discussion format. Don't miss this opportunity. She does have a disclaimer published with the meeting indicating that her presence there or anything about there is not to be construed as legal advice. So that's also posted with the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to attend. This is a district-wide meeting, as well as an open forum for parents in other nearby districts.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson? Commissioner Skolika?
I don't have anything yet, but I deliver forward to working with Bristol Central and Gibson, and seeing what we can do to make those schools thrive.
Commissioner O'Brien?
No report.
No report, thank you.
Okay, so now, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of discussing the 2020 to 2023 Bristol Association of Principals and Supervisors contracts. Invited to that meeting will be Attorney Ritter, Dr. Galloway, and Dr. Carbone.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Okay, away we go, upstairs.